Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. And this is the regular meeting at Sandpoint City Council that is now called to order. For the record, I, Councilman, Councilman Darling, residing in Sandpoint Community Hall 204 South First Avenue in Sandpoint, Idaho. Also present are council members Joel Espiro, Kate McAllister, Andy Grove, Mayor Shelby Rongstad, Council President Shannon Sherman, and Councilwoman Deb Rule are absent this evening. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will stand. I have an announcement before we proceed. An amendment to the agenda was proposed after the agenda was posted in less than 48 hours prior to this meeting. The proposed amended agenda was posted yesterday but cannot become effective until a motion is made and the council votes to approve the amendment. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda with an additional item under executive session to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Thank you, Roll Call Hope.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Espiro?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes. Motion passes. Are there any announcements from council this evening? Announcements next, we have employee recognition with the presentation from Human Research Director Nicole Goes.
Well, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize several city employees who have successfully obtained a job-related certification or license in the last quarter. We are proud to have such dedicated and hardworking employees and we regularly receive many compliments and words of praise for our employees from our citizens. We appreciate the effort and the time they have put into their professional development. One of our adopted strategic priorities has been investment in and support for further development of our employees throughout the city. They have each displayed great enthusiasm to learn and grow professionally. To show our appreciation for their work and conduct, we would like to present them with a certificate of recognition for their accomplishments. We will be making our presentation by division. And it looks like only one of our employees being recognized is here this evening, so all accepted certificates on their behalf. First, we have several employees in the utility services group of the IDS Division who have passed an exam from the Idaho Board of Drink Water and Wastewater Professionals to obtain either a higher-level license or an additional license above and beyond what is required for their position. Congratulations to the following employees. Jesse Ackland for water distribution operator level two license. And Jesse Ackland again for water treatment operator level two license. Brian Strong for wastewater treatment operator level three license. Corey Shook for water distribution operator level one license. And Tim Wiet for water treatment operator level two license. Next, we have two employees in the street services group of the IDS Division who have completed the LTAC Roads Solder Program, which is designed to provide participants with the fundamentals of safety management and advanced technologies as well as exposure to a wide variety of other topics relevant to the transportation field. Congratulations to the following employees. Jason Calderon and Stephen Morgan, who both completed the Roads Solder Program. Next, we have one employee in our police division, Derek Pegstrom, who is being recognized for his recent promotion to Corporal Two. And last but certainly not least, our employee who is here, if I can have him come up. We have one employee in our Parks and Recreation Division, Jason Wiley, who is being recognized for completing training that resulted in the following three certifications. Been pretty busy. He received Wilderness First Responder, Wilderness Anaphylaxis Training, and Urban and Wilderness CPR Certification. So congratulations and a round of applause for that.
Thank you for, for everybody for putting their time into the certifications and the process. Jesse, Brian, Corey, Tim, Jason, Stephen, and Jason. Thank you very much. Jennifer, are there any announcements from staff today?
The only brief announcement out of town, Councilman, is we will be announcing a neighborhood meeting here in the next couple of weeks regarding the Pine Street Sidewalk Project. So we got a grant for that a couple of years ago. We're in design last year. And this is the summer of construction of this Pine Street Sidewalk. So people can look for that announcement. We'll be mailing out to neighbors along that corridor directly. And we'll also have it on our webpage and Facebook page, so in the next couple of weeks.
We are now to our section of public forum. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the, gives the public an opportunity to address the council regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. At this time, I would like to take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comment during the city council, Sandpoint City Council meetings during public forum, and also during public hearings and other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you would like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone the opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Please note that if you're participating by Zoom, you will need a working microphone on your smartphone or computer in order to participate. When your name is called, you'll see a, you will see a prompt on your screen to unmute. You will need to press click to, you will need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating in the meeting room in person, if you wish to speak during the public forum or any other topic on the agenda, you'll need to complete a sign-up form and hand it to staff. The forums are available at the table by the door. In interest of time, I would be appreciative if you would please not respond for your comments made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall be personally derog, shall not be personally derogatory or nor should be personally directed to any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any question to city council or city staff during your comments. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. We will now begin the first 20 minutes of public forum. First, has anyone signed up for public forum?
By Councilman Darling, we do have one individual in the room signed up for public forum. Rebecca Holland.
Good evening. Can I take my mask down? Good afternoon.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Holland, a business, a Sandpoint business owner. Um, and I wrote my statement. I'm here tonight because I know you will, in the next couple of weeks, be turning your attention to the multimodal transportation plan. An issue of great concern for many, many years has been how do the children of our community safely ride their bike to City Beach? When I served on the Ped, Pedestrian Bicycle Committee, we tackled this issue and created a citywide bike route system called Explore Sandpoint, which was all approved by a previous city council. Mayor Shelby Rongstad was our liaison. However, not all is going forward into this next week plan. For this moment, I'd like you to think about all the children in, who live in the center of town. Think in the direction of Farm and Stidwell. For them, invite, and we teach them to go to the east-west route on Oak Street. At Fifth Avenue, they cross safely across using the RFP strobe to stop traffic. Then into busy downtown for, the plan has always been to have a separated bike lane. However, that has been cut off, was been put off to sharing travel space with trucks and cars and cycling next to other parked trucks and cars. Then the connection from Main and First over to Bridge Street through Farm and Landing was lost in the trade to the developer at First and Bridge. While the city did gain some additional sidewalk space, unfortunately, there was no consideration made for the lost value of blocking off our main bike route to City Beach, which also is US Bike Route Number 10 used by cross-country riders designed to bring them into our town to visit stores and restaurants. It's a done deal unless the new owners would want to reconsider this into their plans. We know that many residents who responded to the online survey recognize the busy intersection of Bridge Street and First Street and Church Street with the summer congestion that includes vehicles towing boats as a huge problem. Last month, I met with, is that for me? Yeah, thirty seconds. And briefly, Jennifer Stapleton discussed this issue. And while I'd like to be supportive of the current version of the multimodal plan, I really can't in good conscience agree that funneling all cyclists through this malfunction junction as it is will be safe. It is recognized to be problematic for people to get over to Main Street from this intersection. So the Plan B will be, after enough frustration is experienced, it will be closed off on First Avenue.
Councilman Darling, next three minutes.
Between Bridge and?
Ms. Holland, can we give you another 15 seconds to finish up?
Oh, I'm gonna fast. I timed myself at home. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay. So here's the important part is like, um, enough for us, close off, rip, First Avenue block between Bridge and Main and make it a plaza for pedestrians and cycles, no vehicles. So frankly, that is our best plan. It is the solution to the problem. Let's prioritize our most urgent needs for safe biking, which is, which is needed in Plan B to be one, a separated bike lane down Main along with a plaza connection between, going over to Bridge. I ask you as a council to insist that this be in the multimodal transportation plan for approval next month. Then we will see more kids getting permission from their parents to ride to Beach. We'll see more families riding to Beach, leaving more available parking for those who don't ride and for out-of-town visitors. Please don't put this off. There's at least, I've calculated 800 to 1,000 kids aged 10 to 16 in this town that we have to think about, their safety and their enjoyment for the short number of years that they are a kid wanting to meet their friends at City Beach in the summer. This is who we need to be thinking about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments. Listen, is there anybody else?
Councilman Darling, there isn't anyone who's signed up in the room. But if there's anyone participating by Zoom who would like to speak during public forum, please raise your hand. No, Councilman.
Okay. That concludes the first 20 minutes of public forum. If you wish to speak and have not yet had an opportunity to do so, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. And the public forum will be reopened again after conclusion of the business items on the agenda. We're at the consent calendar. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $367,521.67 for regular payables. Are there any items that the council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Espiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the, on the agenda is a public hearing on proposed new fees and fee increases greater than 5%. On March 31st, 2021, city council scheduled this public hearing pursuant to Idaho Code Section 63-E-1311A. A notice of a public hearing was published in the Bonner County Daily, the, the city's newspaper, for record on March 23rd and 30th. Before we open the public hearing, Recreation Supervisor Jason Wiley has a brief presentation.
Is anyone okay? Sometimes I drop my voice, so that happens, just let me know. Looked at our fees. So purpose this is to update our existing fee structure to increase the efficiency and improve our cost recovery from activities that directly impact our facility staff and resources. The current fee structure and rates have been in place for many years with little to no adjustment. We spent the artificial field service at Memorial Field necessitated this analysis and adjustment taken with the over, overcharging for such a current facility. Our existing fee structure is laid out right here. We've got a $3, $3 per field, $27 per season per team. There is a $3 per person per season for out-of-town participants. It's speculated 50% for local teams and still their non-resident development fee. I may refer to it as the NRTD fee later, just in case I throw that out. That's what I'm talking about. Actual utility costs to use the lights at Memorial Field. And then there is a 2,000 cap match term of charge. On our proposed fees, the summary here is we've placed users into five groups to determine rates. Our group one is for our city programs, city-sponsored events. Group two is Lake Monterey School District. They receive priority scheduling. Group three is our local nonprofits, like Strikers, Semple, where the football league, lacrosse. Youth is prioritized, prioritized over adult programs. Group four is our local for-profit and the out-of-area nonprofits. Youth, once again, is prioritized over the adult programs. And group five is out-of-area for-profit events. There's different rates for natural versus artificial turf. There's different costs associated with that facility. It removes the team fee for our local teams. It does retain an out-of-area team fee. It also removes the non-resident development. It increases the maximum tournament charge to $3,000. And it includes additional fees that can be applied for events or programs where we incur direct costs from or from requests to provide additional services for our users. It clarifies our billing units, attendance of basketball court use, and includes fees for the, for RV work. And this is the RV part that is in reference to the one managed by Sandida that we evolved to land as well. This fee structure was developed to try to get the greatest benefit for our local teams involved in interleague play and for practices. They're the ones that are paying, you know, the, the parents or the kid. Parents are paying the tax bill to support us inside the city limits and then getting the greatest benefit of the benefits. The proposed for the grass fields or diamonds is as here, you'll see there's a field rate is for group one and three is at $9 an hour. Group four and five, this is where we're getting into our out-of-town groups coming in and for profit. And it goes up from there. Our out-of-area team fee is $30 per day all the way across. You'll see there's no non-resident development fee there. There is a change fee in there. I want to make sure that we understand that is for after the city to set our schedule for the week. And then someone calls up and they want to change the schedule and add games and take things off. And we've got to readjust our schedules, change our staffing levels and all that kind of stuff to accommodate those. Does not include things like air conditioning, you know, small smoke fires, wind, snow, those kind of things where we're going to cancel for weather, natural occurrences. That's not what this is about. This is just changing things after, after we have everything set. There is a tournament fee, which is 175 a day for groups one through three. And a match tournament charge of 3,000. Now, this looks like a lot, but only difference ones here from the other one that are not optional fees is we have a secondary partial field rate. This allows us to maximize the use of Memorial Field. For instance, if we've got someone using the main pitch for a soccer game, we can have someone have a practice over on the side out of the way that's not interfering with the game to maximize the use of that field where we have just stuff sitting there. The day fee is no change. That is at the current rate that has been adopted, which is $2 per ticket. There is an annual home field replacement fee for group two. If you remember, that is Lake Monterey School District. This home field placement fee or rate is because many school districts build and maintain their own facilities around the door for their facilities. Our school district does not. We're happy to have them use our facilities, but they don't have that, that line item to build and maintain those facilities. And so this is to help us offset those costs as the school district has a larger tax base reach. And we are limited to our constituents inside Sandpoint City Limits. This helps with that a little bit. And also will help us with our set aside of the projected replacement costs of the field, which I'll have a little bit later. Optional fee charges allow user groups to either do that work themselves or have us do some of this work as well. So that includes the bleachers, city staff onsite, trash removal, cleaning of the grandstands. Those are all things that if they don't want to do it, we can find ways of doing that or they can take, do that upon, take that upon themselves to clean that satisfactory and that trench won't be incurred. So those are optional fees. The tennis and basketball courts. They're currently at $6 per unit per hour. We just basically clarified this to break it down per court. A per-court rental was not previously available for resident. And the rate is at $3 per hour per court. Professional would be someone teaching lessons on our courts. We pay $6 per court per hour or a reservation by office. Proposed RV fund fees. We use the current fee structure that's in place by Sandida with an additional percentage added to cover the associated costs of the credit card transaction fees. That will manage this a lot like we do our visitor morgue down at City Beach and the windbag. And we're kind of going to pass along that credit card fee to users. Our user group impact estimate. This was used, this comparison is based on 2019 usage. 2020 usage, as we all know, was a bit different, wasn't very representative of standard here. This is our estimate based upon the numbers and data that we have from 2019 between what each user group paid and what the proposed would be for that. There is an increase to user fees that is part of the proposal. We have seen a change in dynamic of use. We've got user groups using Memorial Field that in the past have not traditionally. We've also seen just our use there go up in number. It's not just as the grass fields were starting to go up until now. We're seeing outside organizations requesting to vote the facility for tournaments and leagues. They're being appraised of what the new fee structure is going to be and what that's going to cost. I'm still receiving, which is special with requests and tournament requests. I've had to turn a couple of them away because of conflicts for local groups. So that's a good sign. There was a question raised about the impact upon competitive games, like when the Great Monarchs holds. They generally hold that during the Monterey Bowl, which would actually put it underneath the tournament cap. Currently, it'd be 2,000 or it was proposed to be 3,000. But if that was booked independently as its own separate event, we're going to do an exhibition game. It's booked as a one-time event. Under the proposed rates, it would be $138 plus the gate fee. Under our current rates structure, it would be 252 plus utilities for the lights. So in 2019, that was 280 bucks for that night, plus the gate fee. So for a one-off event, under this new structure, it was actually, would actually be cheaper for them. Some groups also play the same team multiple times per season. And some concerns raised about the impact this is going to have on our particular user group. Since out-of-area team is assessed per day, the removal of the local team fee and the NRTD fee is to help alleviate that a little bit. It's not just adding on top of this. It's kind of trading those two out. And using the 2019 numbers, or like Strikers, the difference between a current, the current fee structure and local out-of-town with an NRT, with the NRTD fee. So current fee structure, there's assessed a fee for the local teams and for the out-of-town teams per season. And then there's an NRTD, which is allocated at 50% for local teams and 100% for out-of-town teams. So you lump all that together and that's what the team fee offsets. Using the numbers that we have from 2019. If each out-of-town team was played three times at home, the increased difference between what the team fee assessed for 2019 and under these new fees would be, would be $140 difference. So there's an increase, but it's, it's not.
For the entire week.
For the entire year. You know, one of the things this new structure or the new fee structure takes into account is the amount of use. Our old fee structure was really based on the setup and structure of your leagues, as interesting as that sounds. The new fee structure will vary depending on the use. So the more use you have, not just your player, the way the composition of leagues is. If you played all those teams only one time, you would have the same team fees allocated if you played multiple times in our, in our current fee structure. It'll only be 400 or less than if you played it three times in the new structure. The tournament cap is increasing, but it has saved organizations somewhere between $4,000 to $6,000 on a regular basis from this, since it's been implemented.
I could speak to that because I've been here forever. If they truly did for years and years pay $7,000 to $8,000 per, for that turn. The impact on the city was had on our, our crew. But we realized that also that was a fundraiser for that organization. Unlike Parks and Recreation, they didn't have any taxpayer support. So there was that cap, but also realistically, that was a long time, you know, to take that cap from, you know, up to 3,000. I think it's a very fortunate thing. And in fact, the whole entire fee structure here is, to my mind, is excellent. It incentivizes, it adds the utilities into the user fees. So whereas before, in the prime time, everybody wants to practice right after school, right? And so like at Memorial, that if you were going to practice late and you use the lights, then not only did you get not prime time, but then you would also have utilities. We wrapped all those costs now into that one cost to incentivize later practices. And it actually, we found that some of the high school kids actually enjoy that. You know, there's this kind of change to, kind of the dynamic of that little bit, kind of it's, it's just different with our field. And also just as a great opportunity to thank you guys for your vision on that field. It's been incredible, the use over there. And, you know, it's, be able to actually have a spring sports season. And when it rains, it's not everybody sitting there pulling out their hair, wondering what's going to happen because it'll just go through the turf and it'll continue. So it really has been a success and it's, and we haven't revisited these fees forever. And I know that we've had some, some contacts from some user groups. Anytime fees go up, it's a drag. You know, people don't like that. In Kim's world, everything can be free. But the reality is our citizens pay a huge bill for our parks' facilities. And, and the users that we have, the, the citizens, you know, a portion of our locals that we call local live in the city, but a lot of them don't. We still consider them local. There's, you know, when we bring the out-of-town teams in, where we've tried to capture and capitalize on that, but still maintain and with our intra-play, you know, with the in-Sandpoint within the Strikers organization, they're directly cut stuff, truly their costs have gone down. So I think it's an excellent model, looking at what we have. And also to realize we need to have a sustainable fee structure that can take us in and setting aside the money, which we've talked about. Now, it's an expensive field and it's, it's a carpet. It's going to wear out. So we need to plan for that. So I think truly Jason and Jennifer and everybody that's been involved in this process has done an outstanding job.
So I, I'm sure you referenced the two letters that we got in your presentation, Jason. And I left it in my office. I'm very sorry. And I believe they were talking about the turf, right? They were going to use the, the big field, so they were, they were concerned about the price increase. And I believe they were talking about the turf, right? They were going to use the the big field, so they were they were concerned about the price increase, is that correct? I think it that's what.
It was it was overall just the changing of the reason.
Right, so are we letting them know that we have to save sixty almost sixty three thousand dollars a year in order to keep the turf which they voted for?
So I just. Been part of our presentations again, but it's, you know, people are have selective hearing.
Right, yeah.
And the reality is that we as the professionals and youth decision makers are watching at which best first is. You know, so, yeah, again, in my perfect world, there is no money, you know, there's always has fun stuff, it's free, but that's not reality.
But yeah, and I just want them to be aware that there's reasoning behind this, it's not just because because we have to maintain the turf that we all.
And have a sustainable program.
Okay.
You know, and we're so blessed to have that opportunity.
Thank you.
In in putting this structure together, we looked at a few different locations around. This is a comparison of several ones we have along with what our current fee structure is. One that's been brought up to me in the past is real life ministries over at Spokane, they've got some nice turf fields and they use them on a regular basis. A two hour block of time reserved on real life ministries, it brings you ninety dollars and Memorial Field, they're bringing seventy seven dollars to play a local team versus out of town. So we're actually cheaper for a year, rent that for one game, so.
I had a question about that, Jason, it was still asked by one. Club tournament director, he said that when you invite a team to play you, your club pays for that out of town teams. Prices, did that get addressed? Did that ever get answered? It was specifically a striker, standpoint striker.
I think that that's a dynamic that's out of our control.
And I agree. Wasn't there a mechanism to help offset some of those costs to the club at the club level?
Well, well, part of it is what Jason has just talked about, like when you compare truly with the the Corlaine facility. So they're paying because, you know, it's an hourly rate, but but still we are capturing the money and it's a higher rate for that out of town team coming in straight up. It is, you know, if you're just playing Sandpoint versus Sandpoint or Bonner County versus Bonner County, your fees are lower, straight up, that is dead.
We'll have a mechanism to fill that team separate, where more facilities is is the bill. Maintenance costs, here's just kind of a snapshot, let's see, in 2019. Memorial Field, I mean, we've got an awesome park system and Memorial is just fantastic. But it costs a little bit to maintain such a great park system. You can see our total expenses in 2019 for Memorial Field was a little over a hundred and eight thousand. Our facilities revenue total coming in from that facility was thirteen five eighty six. And our parks full maintenance for 2019 was just over nine hundred thousand.
I think one of the things I would note, and and Kim can speak to this too, that we were trying to address when we looked at the fees is where. Park systems and recreation systems are going in general is more for a pay to play structure. And so that was considered with looking at our fees. And where is use and where do we charge fees for use of the facilities because when it's not. When it's not paid by the users of the facility, it's paid by the property taxpayers, which is a much smaller base. That was also one of the reasons for removing the N R D F Bs through this, so what we were doing is we were adding an additional fee. Onto the field reservations that was really going into fun playgrounds and the parks, which arguably are playgrounds are used by our residents primarily. Whereas the fields primarily actually end up getting used by players that are outside, more predominantly outside of city limits. So that was part of the reasoning for this restructuring was the pay to play model, but also recognizing that we do receive. Tax dollars have recreation dollars coming in, so that also comes into to feed this facility, but not at the expense of our other parks amenities like playgrounds and other things. It's really starting to look at users.
And then to Jennifer's point, when you drive by and look at the rec league soccer on Sibley Farm and there's a bajillion kids out there. More than fifty percent of those kids do not live inside the cities. Just, you know, it used to be a higher percentage to dig, but with the growth, you know, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, it just is. And you represent those people who live inside the cities, we're trying to come up with an equitable system. That is still affordable, accommodates our locals, because we still call ourselves all locals, I live up three miles of Paulie, I'm local, right, you know, so.
And it was a much more, and we discussed this at the at the initial presentation, if it's trying to come up with a more simplified structure too. Where our users could actually plan for what their costs were going to be for using our fields, so in the past. It would be they would they could come up with the field use fees, but then they'd have to do reconciliation after the fact to have kids from where. And and then what were the additional fees with that, submit that, we'd have to verify that, so it was a lot of back and forth administrative work. That frankly is costing the city money and it's also costing the user groups time and money as well, so that's been eliminated in this.
Yeah, to a to a group, everyone was excited to get rid of the N R D F. Which was my idea, by the way, and I built a lot of playgrounds.
And so now we get Memorial surface replacement, estimated fifteen year life on the carpet. Replacement cost is close to a million dollars, meaning we need to put away about six little over sixty two thousand every year. Our current set aside balance for the field is at eighty two thousand ninety eight dollars. So this is this is one of those numbers we're trying to do, we don't want to in fifteen years say, oops, we need another million to put in the cart down.
So that ten K from the district will go straight into that, okay?
Thanks, Jason, you did a great job. Councilman, not questions, but I wanted to thank you for all the hard work and effort and I know I reached out to you with those two emails. You did a pretty good job addressing those and I appreciate that and. Yet to Kim's point, I do think that anytime we're going to have a fee restructuring, there is going to be, for lack of better words, some sour grapes, but or however. It's necessary, it's been something that has been not it's it needs to come up front, you've done a great job looking at it, I think it's. Fair and equitable for those local traditional or legacy users and they will they'll adjust and adapt. And it's, we are a premier setting, right? Everybody wants to be here, including the people that do live up here, you're doing a great job with having. A vision upfront to make sure that that the burden isn't just on the property owners here. That the users of those have some of that responsibility also, which is probably something that's been lacking in the past, to your point, that not. And and that's why it's kind of a challenge, it's not so much locals anymore, but it's traditional and legacy users of our park systems. So thank you very much.
Any other questions, Jason? Thank you, Jason, for your presentation. Kim, for your guidance on that. Council members, please note that if you have any questions for those who speak during the public hearing, you should ask those questions at that time before the hearing is closed. For members of the public, just just a reminder that the rules for public comment recite recited at the beginning of the meeting are still on the fact. I'll now open the public hearing. And third, has anyone signed up to speak?
Councilman Darling, no one has signed up at this point. If there's anyone on Zoom who would wish to testify during the public hearing, please raise your hand. No, councilman, not seen anyone.
Nobody in the audience? Before we close the public hearing, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? With all who wish to be heard, with all who wish to be heard, having had an opportunity to speak on this matter, I now close the public hearing. With the public hearing closed, no further public comment will be considered and council will now deliberate and make a decision. Is there any other deliberation on this, council? I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for adoption of new fees and or fee increases greater than five percent.
So move it.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Espro?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes. They'll be taking up new business ahead of the old business this evening. And the first item under new business is the annual request from Sulker, Pontcharra Transit, the Spot Bus. For match funding from the city. The request for fiscal year twenty twenty two is sixty seven thousand five hundred dollars. Spot and executive director David Sims is here to provide a brief presentation.
Thank you, council, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Spot is entering its eleventh year of service here in the area and we really appreciate the support of the city Sandpoint, not it. Our service wouldn't be possible. Covid has affected public transit across the country, across the state and spot, you know, in a tremendous way as it has all businesses. We saw a significant rider decrease during the last year, our ridership is down approximately forty percent on our fixed route. We've been watching that gradually rebound, our arch numbers were encouraging, we were about ninety percent of our pre covid level. So it's good to see those numbers coming back as people are are more. Willing to get out in the public. Spot did maintain its full service over the last year, a lot of public transit agencies have reduced service or sometimes stoppages because of. Covid issues with drivers themselves, we worked really hard to keep our drivers healthy and we were able to keep all the routes running as normal. We also worked hard to try to keep people healthy, our riders healthy, we distributed free masks on our bus. Buses, we gave out over five thousand masks this year. We also have been. Doing something that's new for us, previously our FDA funding wouldn't allow us to deliver food, that they changed those rules due to covid and we have been helping the Bonner County Food Bank deliver food to the to the outline schools. That's that's been a real help to me. Looking forward, we are planning to adjust our blue route this summer to serve the new Connect Sioux facility by Super One. We currently get a lot of requests for people to go to Connect Sioux, but because of where it's situated off the routes, the road retracters. We, you know, prior to them moving, we really couldn't figure a good way to serve that, so that will work well. Think we'll have good ridership to that stop and also we'll probably add a stop at the apartment complexes behind further. Another thing. And I appreciate the opportunity to go through the multi modal plan. One of the things that you plan in the capital improvement is looking at in the future, a micro transit type of setup. Spot applied for funding through I T D last fall and we were successful in getting funding for a planning grant. To look at what that would look like for a system, if it would be cost effective or not. And the way that would work, it would be an on demand system where users would use either a website, call in or use an app similar to a. A ride sharing system where that's how they would schedule their rides. So we're looking at seeing if we could augment our existing service or perhaps replace some of our fixed route with that type of system. A number of systems across the country have been looking at that and doing it, some some very successful, successful, so we'll be looking at that. And as we get closer to that, we'll be working with our our funding partners, we would hope that the city of Sandpoint would be involved in that effort to look at what that might look like. The other thing that we'll look at is how we can perhaps reconfigure our fixed route to provide better service for communities as well. We're also planning probably next calendar year, we have funding to refresh all of our main route buses here in Sandpoint, so we'll be able to keep. Good buses there. So one of the things I mentioned last year was that Spot received an allocation, we haven't received the money, but I T D has an allocation for Spot or of Paris Grant Funding. And that's allowing us to keep the match request the same as we did last year, which is ten percent less than we did the previous year. We're planning to, that cares that money could last as long as seven to ten years, we'll use that to reduce the cost of the burden on the local. Match providers. Are there any questions?
Yes. First of all, everybody knows I'm a raving fan of Spot, the chamber was one of the initial partners. And full disclosure, I sit on the board for Connect Sioux Health Services. And I just want to let you know how important it is for that underserved population, that is remarkable, I mean, the clinic itself will be great, but. And and what you do, and I'm out and about, talking to business people and talking to the community a lot, I'm involved in many, many things and. Nothing but positive, positive things are said about the Spot Us, and so I just want to commend you and your organization and Cliff, as chairman of the board, and. I just think it's remarkable, I think it's great that people, we have public transit, and our little tiny part of the world, so thank you very much.
Councilman, I'd like to add to that, this is just congratulatory, you guys have done a great job, the pandemic has provided a lot of opportunities for us to. Rise to certain challenges and I think that Spot has done a great job, I I work next to the food bank and to see how. Well served our community is by the partnerships that is Spot. We might be a small community, but we're a pretty spread out community and we need organizations like you and individuals like you to help keep us connected, so. Not only thank you and and your people, but I'd like you to go back to your staff and your drivers specifically and thank them. They, it it was, so I write the I write the bus up to Schweitzer, you know, and. It's, it has, there's been some some challenges and I'm very appreciative of those who have. Given grace to those who are in whatever discomfort they have and your drivers have done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a very close to home. Part for me, I was on the Pontcharra City Council at the time when it all kind of came to fruition, so. And I'm just so thankful that the city of Pontcharra and city of Dover came together and then brought everything in within the city of Sandpoint to make this happen. Because this is one of the best assets that our community has, so thank you for your time and service and efforts. Any other questions? None? I'm quick, are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
No one has signed up to comment on the side of councilman.
Anybody from public that would like to? Seeing none. With the general census. With the general census on behalf of council, I would like to direct staff to include this request in the city's fiscal year twenty twenty budget. To be presented for council consideration in July. Thank you very much. The item, final item under our new business is a grant award and agreement to the proposed purpose of funding repairs aim. At alleviating drainage issues on a portion of the. Trail, Parks and Recreation Director Kim LeGrif will get us started with the presentation.
Thank you, councilman, this is going to be a fun presentation and I'll make it as fun as fast as I can. I'm really excited to share this public benefit partnership, the partners in this one are the city. Thanks to another successful grant application of all through for Linda. Sandpoint Ranger District, which leases the Portune this year for recreation from the district to share with us tonight. And then the Idaho Panhandle Resource Advisory Committee, which references rack, if you may have heard of it in the community. The project, as you had mentioned, is to rebuild a sustainable trail in the city and flats that are saturated in the spring. The trail opened seventeen years ago, it came from a major land donation from Mick and Nikki Quest. And also was a really a champion by Mayor Miller, so when we first, it's kind of in the side, because I've been here forever, is it was not. Really accepted when we first wanted to find a trailhead for this to try to access that donated property. But Mayor Miller went to bat for that and I thank him for that vision. The partners in the original trail were the city of Sandpoint for the trail headed trail proper. for the trail-headed trail proper portion. Sandpoint Ranger District, the BLM, Bonner County, and the Friends of the Mickinac Trail, which are still reactive. The city property meets the Forest Service property where the mountain begins, a two-thousand vertical game, thanks Stairmaster, if you haven't been on, that's good. So we have the next one. The trail is very close to Sandpoint, very popular year-round. Often the lot is full. You can see the parking lot in that picture there. Okay, next. Because of the Stairmaster effect, your experience and the incredible views are almost immediate and often. So as you continue to climb, there are a couple benches and just some clear viewings where they're truly spectacular, you know, to get this view from the Mickinac Trail and then from Gold Hill on the other side and the Monarchs. If you haven't tried all three of those, I mean, the lake truly looks different than every one of those locations. The cool part, this one, is it's just so close. As mentioned earlier, the flats are owned by the city and are saturated in the spring season and during heavy rains. Small sections have been improved, but an additional eight hundred feet is much needed. This is quick, they're doing awesome. This is a great project. Oh, wow. Lisa Fortune is here with the U.S. Forest Service in the Sandpoint District. She contacted me a couple of years ago saying, hey, you know, this is really muddy in the spring and during rains, is there anything we could do? And so it's really her idea that was brought forward. It's almost watch out what you ask for because you might get it and she'll be doing the work. And so I'm going to turn it over to her real quickly to explain the specifics of the trail fixing. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks to Kim and Linda for their willingness to work with me on this project, this idea. It was their idea to apply for the RAC grants. My idea was, hey, if you guys buy the materials, we'll, we'll do the labor. We'll provide the labor. And this grant is allowing us to do this. So if you've ever hiked this section, I think Linda took these photos last weekend. Yeah. This is how it looks in the spring when the snow's melting off and we're in the middle of breakup. And so just past the section, right before you hit the Forest Service boundary and it starts to climb, there's a little piece of, we call it turnpike. And it's just kind of an elevated gravel walkway, kind of hemmed in by some four-by-fours. And so we're going to keep that look going and just continue that back towards the trailhead where the muddy section is. So the grant that was awarded, Idaho Panhandle Resource Advisory Committee grant, that amount, the ninety-three fifty, will cover the purchase of gravel, like five truckloads of three-quarter linens, eight hundred four-by-four treated four-by-fours, rebar, like a geotextile landscaping fabric to lay down first so the gravel doesn't disappear into the mud. And then my trail crew of four people will be, and myself, will be building this this May and June. Oh, and it also covers a tractor rental for Bobcat as well. So hopefully after this season, it'll be much improved and less of a mud fest. And people don't like to walk through the mud, so the trail just gets wider and wider and wider and wider as they try to avoid the mud. So we'll throw down a little bit of seed and try to re-reflect that muddy section as it picks up as well.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you. Observations, I'm very familiar with the trail and that junk. And it's really cool that this is happening now, especially, so there's another, there's a run up on, on Schweitzer here pretty soon. And Mickinac is the training course for some of us. So, yeah, so this is going to be much improved. And if you need more volunteers, I'm certain that one or all of us would be more than happy to come on, try to help if we can. Kate Stone.
I think it's a bond on the trail. I think it's really great. What a great partnership. I think it's fabulous. Great. And Linda, great, great.
Yeah. Is the booing a good, it's a big kudos on this one, follow up, find it, imagine. That's all for her doing the work, hey, everybody.
There any members of the public who have signed up to comment on this?
No, councilman. No one has signed up.
Okay. I didn't take a motion to approve the resolution for the challenge cost-share agreement with the USDA Forest Service in Idaho Panhandle National Forest.
Second?
Councilman Espro?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under old business this evening, this is an introduction to the draft multimodal transportation master plan, part one of two. At this time, I will yield the floor to Infrastructure and Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Well, tonight marks a significant milestone in a really critical planning effort that started about fifteen months ago. And I would actually say that one could argue this started many, many years ago. This plan builds upon a number of previous planning efforts as well as much community effort and accomplishments, I would say, over the years. So we're really excited that the draft multimodal plan is now available for viewing and discussion. We are not requesting any action this evening. This is truly just a presentation. Instead, we're going to provide a high-level introduction of the plan. And as our plan actually notes, and I'm going to read this specifically, Sandpoint is a growing community, which we all know. But what I find interesting is that our independent consultants have noted that we have a multimodal transportation system that is unusually complex for a town of our size. And I would agree with that. To that end, this plan is really comprehensive and it deserves adequate time to really review it and digest it. And so for that reason, we have broken this up into a couple part series, if you will. So tonight, as we mentioned, is just part one. And what the intent here is actually to give you a preview. So rather than posting this plan on a Friday before we're planning to have a council meeting the following Wednesday, please consider tonight as a high-level introduction again so that you have time to think about it. And we're going to talk about it again on April twenty-first. At that time, you can certainly ask any questions, obviously, or give any input on the section that you read. We'll also be presenting part two, which are the following chapters that we will not be going over tonight. And then we're going to come back again on May fifth and request your consideration of potential adoption of this. So we're going to have lots of conversations and we're going to give you adequate time to review the document itself. So after tonight's presentation, chapters one through four will be posted on our front page of our website in the news section. So you'll have time to read it and certainly reach out to any staff with questions. So with that, as shown on the presentation tonight, we're going to be going through sections one through four. And then I'm going to give a little sneak preview, if you will, to something that's more holistically going to be presented at the April twenty-first meeting, and that is Great Northern Road. We previously presented to you some of the initial concept solutions that have been at City Hall in our lobby for many months now for the public's viewing. What we didn't show you yet is this Great Northern concept. It's kind of been a parallel effort. So I want to give you a highlight of that tonight and then we'll take a deeper dive on April twenty-first. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to our consultants, who at this point are very familiar faces. They've been here many times with you and presented various elements of this plan. But for the public's benefit, I will at least introduce. We have Mandy Roberts, who is our project manager online with us. She is with OTAP. And we also have Preston Stinger, who is our traffic engineer. It's been a close partnership with Mandy throughout this entire effort. So with that, Mandy, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Yes, yeah.
Very good. Okay. And also you can see the screen. I take it, right? Just checking.
Yes, we are on slide two.
Excellent. Okay, well, good evening, councilmembers. I'm really glad to be with you tonight to present the first part of the multimodal transportation master plan. And Amanda really covered what we're going to go through tonight. So we're going to tell you a little bit about how the plan's organized and walk through sections one and four and then give you a preview of Great Northern Road. And we'll have some time at the end for questions and discussions as well. So the, this is basically a very high-level outline of what is in the plan. There are seven sections. First section, introduction, background. Then section two, we go through an overview of the planning process and the public and stakeholder engagement. Section three covers the vision, goals, and objectives. And section four is really the existing conditions analysis that feeds into the improvement concepts and the projects list that are in sections five and six. And then section seven covers funding opportunities. So tonight, we're going to do a walkthrough of sections one through four. So for the introduction and background section, and again, as Amanda said, you all will have the opportunity to download and get into the detailed content that's in this plan. But really what this covers is the background, a lot of the planning effort that's occurred to date, leading up to the development of this multimodal plan. So there have been, there was the urban area transportation plan, for example, that was done about ten years ago. And there are other planning efforts, including recent conference of planning efforts that we have been coordinating with. And so this section really updates or provides information about those plans and how we're updating and building on those previous work efforts. And it also talks about the purpose of the plan and how it's intended to be used in the future. Section two gives an overview of the overall planning and engagement process. And basically, as you'll see, there have been extensive public and stakeholder engagement efforts throughout the project. We worked with an agency advisory committee and a community steering team and had multiple meetings with those groups. This graphic kind of gives you everything in a snapshot view of how engagement efforts have intertwined with technical analysis and development of the plan. So for example, the large orange-colored boxes are major public events. We had a public workshop series last February, for example, and, or February twenty-twenty, right before the pandemic. And then we had a series of public meetings this February to really present some of the draft concepts and ideas that were being developed for the plan. In between that time, we did a lot of analysis and origins and destinations analysis that we'll talk about a little bit more tonight. A road safety audit that Ferrin Pierce did for Division Avenue. And we also had some in-depth coordination with ITD on some concepts for the Highway Two corridor. So a lot of work has been done. These blue dots represent the meetings that we've had with the community steering team and the agency coordinating team. The vision, goals, and objectives section really provide a strong, well-defined and practical look ahead for this plan. We didn't want to be, you know, too far-reaching in our aspirations. We wanted to have a vision that was realistic and could be implemented by the community, but also that looks ahead at trends and growth and things that are happening in transportation. So I think you'll see that the vision is aspirational, but it's not too far-reaching. The goals and objectives are really consistent with other planning efforts in the city. You know, for example, well-aligned with the city's strategic plan. Here's, here's a snapshot of the vision. You know, one thing that was very clear and came through strongly is that Sandpoint is a strong year-round community and it's a very active community. People love to get out and wa-walk and bicycle. They actually use transit at a higher level than other communities across the country. So these are all things that were documented in a, in a public survey that we did at the beginning of the project and through other data that we analyzed. And the vision really speaks to that. You see relation to a resilient economy, livable community, and strong connectivity. And that aspect of this plan being for multi-modes, bicycles, bicyclists, pedestrians, people who ride transit is reflected in that vision. We also have ten major goals and objectives that support each goal, which you'll be able to read in detail in the plan. And I've got them listed here. Again, the goals reinforce the vision statement about providing a balanced approach to mobility throughout the community, having a walkable, bikeable network, a vibrant pedestrian-friendly downtown, a resilient, livable, sustainable transportation system, connections to the waterfront and to City Beach Park as part of that, supporting the use of transit and passenger rail, providing a well-maintained multimodal system. We heard a lot about the challenges of being a year-round community and in particular, snow removal on certain routes. And so this plan sets forth a pedestrian priority network for not only improvements in the future, but also as a guide for maintenance where the routes are most important to be maintained. The plan calls for really thinking about growth. I'll talk more about that in a minute, but there, there is substantial growth happening in the region. And we want the plan to really consider that and look ahead to that. And with that, proactively pursuing funding opportunities so that we can implement the projects that are identified in the plan. And lastly, Sandpoint is the hub of the region and the hub of commerce and activity and employment for many of, many of the communities. And so there's a need for cooperation between other jurisdictions, including ITD and the county and the highway district and the railroads and transit and other partners. And there's also a need to be innovative in thinking about how partners can come together and implement projects together. So that's part of goal ten. Speaking of the city's strategic plan, it calls for conducting a public process to critically review the needs as part of developing this plan. And the vision, goals, and objectives are really resulting from doing just that. And so you'll see in section three that the vision, goals, and objectives should, should resemble a lot of the comments and ideas that we heard in the public survey and from our public meetings and the public outreach that we did. And this really becomes the foundation for the multimodal plan and having it be based on stakeholder and community input. Oops, sorry. Apologize. Hold on, let me close the door. I know Sandpoint is a dog community, so you guys will cut me some slack. Okay. Um, let's talk about section four, which is really where the technical work starts to come into play. So where sections one through three talk a lot about the planning background and engagement and public involvement. Section four presents the results of our existing conditions analysis and technical analysis in multiple layers completed by the team. And so there are different elements that are presented in section four. But really what, what's happening here is we're setting the table for the improvement concepts and the proposed projects that are in the capital improvement plan in, in later sections. So you'll see again in section four that community engagement has been integral to the So you'll see again in section four that community engagement has been integral to the analysis process, but also coming into play data-driven technical analysis that's helped to shape the results of the plan. So for example, you'll start to see a lot of colorful intricate maps. And again, you'll be able to open up, open up the document and zoom in and look at these in detail. But just to give you kind of walking you through how this background analysis supports actions. This is just a glimpse at some of the pedestrian analysis that was done. So the first map that you see on the left-hand side is a gaps and condition assessment for the city sidewalk conditions ranked as excellent, good and poor. And this was actually some work that the city had done prior to us coming on board. But we we mapped and analyzed this and overlaid it with a look at community destinations. And then we also did a walk shed analysis that basically looks at community, public, you know, public destinations and overlays with the sidewalk conditions, looks at information that we obtained from the public about where they walk and and, you know, what's important to them in walking. And kind of looks at these 10-minute circles of walkability, you know, demand. And as you can see, it's really interesting because if you do put these half-mile radii circles around key destinations in the community, there becomes demand for walkability for most of Sandpoint, which I think is really interesting. So what we did from here, though, understanding that, you know, it would be really far-reaching and challenging to build out the entire sidewalk system everywhere in the city over the next 20 years is we worked with community representatives and staff and others to go through this analysis and develop a pedestrian priority network, which you will see in section five. And that assigns priority routes for pedestrians, as I mentioned earlier, for not only improvements, but also maintenance. And really hits on the routes that are most important to get people to and from key destinations like schools, parks, the library and other places in the community. Another key aspect that I mentioned earlier, but is extremely important and something for the city to keep an eye on is the growth that's happening, not only in Sandpoint, but in the inland northwest. The region is experiencing growth at a higher level than other places. And not only that, but in coordination with ITD and even Wash Dot in looking at the Highway Two corridor, investments are being made in those highway corridors that are going to make them more efficient over time. And they're going to be carrying more traffic. Well, guess what? If that happens, then there will be more traffic demand and transportation demand in Sandpoint as well. And then we're seeing other trends. You know, there's a, there's a huge cohort of retirees. We call it the Silver Tsunami. You probably have heard that before, but the Silver Tsunami is coming and people are retiring and that's driving growth. People are love to live in places like Sandpoint and it's very desirable there. Remote working is another thing that's happening. So it's just important to keep an eye on that. And because of that, we're assuming a typically higher-than-average annual growth rate through 2025. And that would be 3.4% annual growth and 2.7% from 2025 to 2040. Apologize for the typo, that's supposed to be 2040. So I think that's great. That's what we've assumed in our analysis. However, it will be important for the city to continue to monitor this over the next few years and see if growth is on track with these numbers. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Preston now to talk a little bit about some of the level of service and network analysis that's been done.
Excellent. Thanks, Mandy. Happy to be with you all this evening. And we've got some great stuff here to show. And this gets pretty technical. I'll try to keep it high level, but feel free to chime in with any comments if you want to dig down into any of this. And also you'll have the opportunity to dig down into the report in more depth as well and be able to see these figures a lot more clear than they are probably showing up on your screen. So maybe we'll just step back real quick and just look at the the bigger picture of Sandpoint in terms of its transportation network, in particular, the street network. And if you look at all the lines on these maps and each map is the same as far as the lines go, they're indicating where the roads are and then what classification of the roads that there are. And by classification, I mean, are they arterials? Either a principal or minor arterial, or are they collector road, or are they a local road? And each of those types of roads have different responsibilities in the greater scheme of our transportation network. And they'll play an important role and it's needed. Each type of those are needed within your total system in order for things to function the way that we want in an efficient manner. It would not be efficient to, for example, to have all local streets, basically residential streets across the entire city. So we want to have a nice mix and and be able to funnel people where we want to funnel them for commuter reasons and then for local access reasons. And each of these roads play their role in that. Now, the great thing about Sandpoint is that you inherently have a great grid system already, which means you have great north-south roads and great east-west roads that all connect in various locations instead of just at, you know, maybe two locations along a roadway in which you would be distributing a lot of your trips, your your vehicle trips in just a couple areas. But instead, since we have a great street network that's in a grid system, trips are able to distribute somewhat evenly across town to where, you know, we don't have high congestion in just a couple areas that are causing issues. So a great thing for that. And not only is that a great thing from a vehicular standpoint, but it's also a great thing from your your bicycle and pedestrian users. Because with a great grid system and a good network, you have less travel, shorter distances to travel in those modes, which encourages people to use those modes and incentivizes them to do so. So let's talk about these conditions on the screen. So the colors, we have streets that are colored and those are just indicating the street classifications that we just talked about of the arterials, collectors and local streets. And there's only one change that we made on classifications, and that's in the downtown area as as with future improvements that we have in store. Yep, right there, First Avenue and and larger Cedar there. Those that was a an arterial and we are proposing that it be changed to a collector with the future improvements we have in that area. And for the purpose that that street should be serving in the in the core area, that's our recommendation. The other colors that are in the bubbles or the circles are coinciding with what we call level of service. And level of service is a grade in the traffic engineering world that we assign to intersections to give them a grade, kind of similar to what you'd get in school with A being a good grade and F being a bad grade. And you have everything in between that, B, C, D, E and F. And in Sandpoint, our threshold that we like to try to stick to is level service D. And that's the orange color or better. If if intersections are falling below that into the Es and Fs, which are your warmer colors, like your your purples and your red colors, then that's indicating to us that we're starting to near some capacity issues that those intersections have some possible congestion or long queues and those kind of things that are indicating we need to look at that and try to mitigate. So if the left map is showing the existing conditions based on either data that was collected in 2018 or 2020, depending on the locations, and that will show how things are operating today. And you'll see a couple, maybe a one purple and one red in there. Now, I will also say, these maps don't show the entire picture. These maps show what the peak hour is on a weekday timeframe, kind of your peak commute time. Now, there are intersections that have problems more often in your peak season, in your summer months, for example, and especially on Saturdays where you have a lot of tourist activity and just general activity around town and especially down by in the core of town that drive some of those level service grades down lower than what are indicated on that map. So for instance, First Avenue by Bridge and Church and Pine, right now, that's showing A, Bs, A, B and B. Whereas on Saturdays, that goes to Fs, that would be a red color on your Saturdays on on in the summertime. So and those are things that we looked at as well. So we want to make sure we're looking at things in all manners. And as we move forward, looking into the future, as Mandy indicated, there is some pretty substantial growth planned for the area. And that was accounted for in these traffic estimates. And you know, those, the the 2% to 3% growth that Mandy indicated, those are quite large growths per year. If you were to look at a roadway that's more on a kind of a plateaued growth, just gradual growth that you typically see in an area that's somewhat built out, you'd be in the half percent to 1% range. So you can see that 2% to 3% is is quite a lot of growth to be sustained year after year after year. So we've got a plan for that. And and continue to monitor that as time goes along. So 2040, the middle map shows without the plan. That means if we don't do any improvements, how will things go? You can see intersections start to change to some orange colors and to some red colors. And some remain at purples and reds. So there's, there's changes afoot if we don't do anything. And we want to try to keep above that level service D range. And there's reasons we want to stay there. There in more rural areas, they like to set the threshold that little service C. Because in the rural area, you you generally have less traffic and you're able to mitigate things at a higher level to keep that sort of traffic at that level of C. As you start to be more built out in suburban and somewhat urban conditions, that grade goes down and there are reasons we want to keep that at a lower range to keep traffic slower in some areas, both from an economic reasons, but also for other transportation user reasons, pedestrians and bicyclists and the comfort level of them riding along the same corridor as the vehicles, not necessarily in the same road, but you know, on the same facility alongside the road. And which we're trying to encourage people to utilize those modes. And then lastly, on that last map, 2040 conditions with the plan, we're just showing the intersections that we've made improvements to or we have suggested improvements where we are changing lots of the reds and purples to good green colors and and some yellow colors, which is a great improvement for those conditions 20 years down the road. Okay, Mandy, anything you want to add there or we could go on the next one? All right.
I think we're good to go.
So origin and destinations analysis, this was a fun little exercise where we we've got data, what we call big data, and that's essentially taking cellphone and GPS data from third-party companies that give it to us to do analysis on across the nation for all the different reasons. In this case, we have data to help us understand how are people moving around the Sandpoint area? Where are they coming from? Where are they going to? What routes are they taking? How many of the trips are staying within the city? How many of the trips are just passing through and don't stop? How many do pass through but at least have one stop? All kind of interesting things to think about and and do help direct us on how to manage traffic into the future and today. So you see that one map that has all the purple dots. Each one of those dots indicates 10 trips. And you can see a high concentration of that around the Sandpoint area itself. And a good portion, in fact, what is it 90? I think it's 94% of all trips stay within the in the county, Bonner County, and and don't leave on a typical day. And you see others going outside of the county as you get a little bit further out, but it's much fewer as you go out. So interesting thing there. And if you want to get dig down to those details, you can go into the report as well. But there's some interesting things that we can understand what the distribution is, where are they coming from? On which roadways are they coming into town? And I would say, well, I'll just leave it there. If you want to dig down to the details, you can get on the report and we can answer them next time if if you got them or this time if you want to as well. All right, next slide. All right, Mandy mentioned the Trend Lab, Trend Lab Plus, which was a workshop we did early in 2020. And the purpose of that is is we know that the realm of transportation is changing and it's changing pretty dramatically and quickly. You'll see news articles come out all the time about autonomous vehicles and and what other technologies are coming out and drone deliveries. And you know, what other factors are changing, how people are traveling, whether it's age. And we talked about the, you know, the age of the Sandpoint residents is increasing, which also means that the miles traveled by those individuals are tend to be on the lower side than they would with younger generations. And the age of getting your license is getting higher and higher. People aren't going out soon as they turn 16 to get their license. And how is that changing how people travel? So there's all these elements that are changing how transportation is going to function and how how long and how we measure this is in miles traveled, vehicle miles traveled, which is that VMT that you see often on, especially on this graphic. Sorry, it's a little bit blurry on the screen there. But the the important thing here is we wanted to make sure we are not overlooking something as as transportation's changing pretty quickly. We want to make sure we're covering this. And if things were going to change drastically in the next 20, 30 years, how do we address that in our plan? And this was done with a group of 12 people from all different agencies and organizations in our in the city, county and ITD that all participated. And we asked questions and had discussions around how they envisioned these things changing into the future. And so right now, based on how Sandpoint is situated, we have an average mile vehicle miles traveled of 7,500, which is that number right there. And as you go along over the years, based on how people voted on what the trends will be for Sandpoint specifically, we have a range. And on average, we're going to be about 6,700, which is that middle. So, you know, people were kind of above voting for things to increase or decrease these factors that are at the bottom of your chart there. And for the most part, people thought that things would increase, which which means that VMT would, this all depends on the factor. In some cases, VMT would drop, some cases it would increase depending on the factor. So in the end, we actually drop a little bit in VMT in in the, based on how people voted in in the next 20 years. But there's also a range, there's lots of unknowns out there. And things could change pretty drastically one way or the other. And that's why there's a range there. We can range from 4,900 to 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 about 11,000 or so. So with all of that, that helped instruct us as we start to look at improvements here in the city, what these transportation improvements of making sure we're covering our basis as these trends go along here in the future.
Okay, thanks, Preston. I think, Amanda, are you going to share your screen now?
Yeah, thank you, Mandy. Do we want to pause here maybe for a second and see if there's any questions or comments? Keep rolling. Excellent. So before I share my screen and show the image, I just wanted to give you just a short bit of history on Great Northern Road. With everyone in the community experiencing Great Northern Road firsthand, I, much of this may go without saying, but I'm going to go ahead and roll through it. In 2010, we actually amended and accepted a northern urban renewal plan. That northern renewal renewal plan contemplates Great Northern as being the road in that area for us to invest in. I'm going to kind of go through really quickly why. That plan in 2010 identified all of the issues that I'm going to list here, and they remain issues today. So the roadway is the width itself is substandard. And when I speak of Great Northern, just sorry to clarify, I'm actually talking about from Baldy Mountain Road all the way up to Woodlake, the entirety of it. It also has poor quality pavement and a saturated base. So that base actually continues to fail, especially with the heavier loads in that industrial area that's on it. Pedestrian and bicycle facilities are just non-existent on the entire corridor. So right now, those uses are mixed, I'm in already some standard width. The roadway profile is flat. And so with any, without any provisions for stormwater, as you've probably experienced firsthand, it floods. And that flooding is actually not just a right-of-way issue. not just a right-of-way issue, it's also an adjacent property issue. And having adjacent properties retain water in a manner that isn't uh isn't intended or isn't designed is causing um indirectly, and I would say arguably directly economic development challenges, right? They want to build out on their property potentially, and yet it's flooded. Um and those costs go up to be able to develop in that area. So um we'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second. But I guess the the point I wanted to really bring home there is that the roadway system in some regards almost serves as a dam and is creating some additional challenges for others beyond just roadway users. And then also lighting is minimal, and it really creates some visibility issues in that corridor in the intersections. Um and that can be really challenging because there's not a lot of lighting out there to begin with. Um also, right-of-way ownership varies throughout that corridor. And so we kind of have limited ability to maintain it the way in which it needs to be. We also have some significant challenges at the Baldy Mountain Road and Great Northern intersection itself. It's on a curve. The alignment's really poor and so is the visibility. So that's a challenge. Um and then also that intersection is substantially under the necessary width that it typically we would typically see. Um there are no turn lanes throughout that corridor. So when there's a train, everyone who wants to go straight through is backed up by those folks who are waiting to turn where a train is preventing them from turning, which means get a lot of near misses because people are trying to go around those cars. It's just not a very safe situation. And that is existing at Gooby Road as well as at Mountain View as well as as it is at Woodland. So with all of those negatives that I just listed, we um kind of on a parallel path and simultaneous with this multimodal planning effort, we engaged another consultant to help us with the preliminary engineering to kind of start working towards getting the solution moving forward. So that preliminary engineering is a, I would say, a higher level than even the concepts that we've been or more detailed effort, I should say, than the concepts we currently have in our multimodal plan. Those are concepts that Great Northern Plan is actually preliminary engineering. So it's a slightly different level of design. Um so I'm going to go ahead and show you that solution. We are going to incorporate it, and it actually has already been into section five and six as far as this multimodal plan, just so that it these two efforts don't seem disconnected and that it's into our broader vision for priorities. So with that, I will share my screen. Another consultant certainly should be recognized that's J V engineers. They've been working really closely with us on that Great Northern effort. So this is not your typical design sheet. Um this is actually G I S. So we're looking at a mapping system. But I think it's the easiest to kind of walk through what we're looking at. So this is Great Northern running north and south or up and down on the the plan in front of you with Woodland Drive going east and west. So at this corridor location, um we intend to be adding an additional dedicated turn lane to resolve that issue that I had mentioned before with cars stacking up. And the brown that you see is just indicating that we would have dedicated stormwater conveyance on the west side between the Vienna Subtracts and the roadway. And then on the east side of the roadway, this area right here is actually a dedicated multi-use path. So that's a twelve-foot wide shared bicycle and pedestrian pathway, and it's bidirectional. So it's north and south rather than building the pathway on the east side and the west side. We're really focusing on the east side, and that's primarily due to safety reasons. It's actually not good for mixed pedestrians and bicycles, as you can imagine with the railroad. So we want to move them to the other side. That said, we have a lot of bicyclists that use this corridor for more of a, not even just commuter, but they're more of an avid bicycle group. It's maybe going up to Schweitzer. I know a guy in his room that does that quite often on his bicycle and uses that route. Um so we're also proposing dedicated bike lanes within that same roadway section. So if we have more kids and others that are not comfortable being in the road, this corridor would provide the multi-use path. And then those who want to just truck ahead and and get to a greater destination there could be in the road on both sides. So with that said, we would also have drainage such as piping going from the east to the west with ultimately the primary conveyance being on the west side of the road here. So this is not too profound of a a change, sticking with the same alignment there. But I promise you, as we we work down this map, you'll see some of those other changes. So here at Mountain View, it's worth noting that ITD plans to put in a a more advanced crossing at this location, meaning having the bars that come down from a safety perspective. If you're not aware, ITD is actually responsible for all railroad crossings within the state of Idaho. So they they work to make them safer and coordinate with the railroads. So we're pleased to see them making that change there. We intend to provide a dedicated turn pocket on both sides as well, so that people can continue to pass through when they're waiting for Mountain View to clear. Same cross-section here, and then it gets interesting. So I'm going to zoom out a bit here for a second. This is Gooby Road. So um here is Gooby. And then the airport's over here. This is the infamous, I'll call it, intersection where we have two railroad intersections coming together. And Great Northern currently, you can see here on the label, runs directly at an angle. This proposed solution I am really excited about because I think it achieves many things in a fairly simplified version. So it's proposing to tee up Great Northern into actually a stop at this location. It's about just over a mile long stretch of road and it has no stops. And so this would be the one new stop at that location. So this ninety-degree configuration, if you will, is a significant improvement from its current condition where the road is coming in at an angle and creates the visibility issues and also the gray issues. You kind of come down off of Gooby Road there. So that visibility is really important. The dedicated turn lanes that would be in place at this location would also help alleviate some of those safety issues. The other um great advantage to improving the safety here, both from a railroad's perspective as well as roadway engineering perspective and and vehicle comfort level, if you will, is that the urban renewal districts are intended to really focus around economic development. That's what they're rooted in. And this proposal, we have had many conversations with the adjacent property owners about this. They're pretty excited. At least at this point, um you know, we still have many more discussions to be had, but this kind of opens up these properties that currently have limited access to them. And so that, I think, is you know, exciting. Um we're also looking at procuring some additional land in this location that's otherwise not very usable, but it has a great opportunity to be a stormwater treatment. So looking for those partnership opportunities with those property owners has been an enjoyable effort, I would say. So looking at options for continuing to improve access, for example, this is showing you as a curve, it could very very easily become a more of a ninety-degree with an access here further going to the south.
So I really like this. Uh so I work in that area also, and people boogie down Great Northern because it's such a straight shot, that ninety-degree is going to build in a traffic and speed control as well. Like, I understand that, you know, commerce and industrial areas. It it gets so slick back there. There's not a ton of sun, and at the winter time, people use that as cutoffs. This is a really wise idea.
Good. I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you. I will be sure to let our team know that, too. They we brainstormed a lot of different ideas at this location, and this one seemed to to kind of be the winner. So thank you for that feedback. We also just for whatever it's worth, this property here has not continued to be developed over the last recent years. We have opportunities to provide a frontage here and or provide additional connection on one or two of those east-west connections that you see here. So there's flexibility. Again, it's just a preliminary design. We'll continue to vet through some of those things as the engineering gets through that process and talk about phasing of it. The last, but certainly the least, is cleaning up the intersection at Baldy Mountain Road and Great Northern. So that intersection currently, as you know, we just reviewed, has many challenges with it. This is doing its best to bring the alignment more into a ninety-degree connection with Baldy Mountain. The blue is, if it's a little confusing on this map, I apologize. It's intended to show potential area for additional industrial use. Just ignore that for a second. The other thing that this does is it moves the intersection away from these railroad crossings, which is advantageous from a safety perspective as well. We don't want people stacking up onto a railroad track trying to take turns. Um and then it provides that connection for pedestrians as well that we currently just don't have. As you can tell, this goes through property. That property is currently owned by Bonner County and primarily the east of the Independent Highway District. So uh we have had multiple conversations with both of those jurisdictions about how do we move this plan forward? Thus far, it's been really positive. So I appreciate all of their efforts coming to the table and realizing that this is certainly for the greater good despite the logistical challenges of moving a yard. So with that, um I don't have any other presentation on Great Northern Road. This is, like I mentioned, going to be in the next chapter that's presented to you on April twenty-first. So you'll have time to really look into the weeds of it at that time, but certainly welcome any questions that you may have.
It's not really, it's more of an observation. So obviously, you guys all know who I work for and how much I drive around. And man, I don't know if it was the nice weather or the school schedules are a little different and there's early release and there's new drivers. But our streets are full, full of cars, not only cars that are moving, but also cars that are parked, like for whatever reason. Our Sandpointians like to park in the street. And that's that's a challenge. So one of the phrase that one of you had made was like a pedestrian priority network. I never heard that before. I think that that's really important. And what I what I hear in that is build it and they will come. You know, the the observation that I have with with people's traffic patterns and the way that they choose to do stuff is kind of a a buckshot as opposed to kind of leading either bikes or people who are walking or even people that drive like we did, like it's going to take a little while, some education, and obviously we're going to conceptually build these things. But to get people Sandpoint residents and Bonner County residents are incredibly independent, and they will do things such as driving and parking wherever it is that they want. It is uh wise of us to have these priority networks and kind of help nudge individuals along as to where they need to be. The highway two, for example, like if we can get the the turning right on and off is going to be huge for all of us. I think that I'm close with this. This is, we're going the right direction. We've got the right people making very good wise decisions to avoid, we we want to keep people safe. And these directions for our bicycles, pedestrians, kids trying to get from to and to and from, get them to the city beach as well as uh those who are biking to Schweitzer. You guys you guys are doing a great job. Keep on keeping on.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Anyone from the public who signed up to comment on this item?
No councilman, no one has signed up to.
Oh, we have one of the back, a couple in the back. Everybody from the public? Come up to the diet or to the dais here and uh make sure to sign in.
Jane, thirty, just a quick question. Are these the the presentations we've seen from this presentation as well as the previous two, are those available to the public to be seen? Do we need to come into the office and pick them up when there's nothing here now?
Great question. Do you want me to answer or use? Yes, the answer is yes. So there's two different modes. The plan itself, who we posted on our city website on the main page under news, you can actually download the plan itself. The presentations, all of our city council meetings and presentations are available on our website as well via the meetings link, and then it actually takes you to our YouTube channel. So you can watch tonight's presentation and all of the past. If you prefer, we are happy to print the draft plan for you at City Hall. I would be happy to do that if you just come in and
Maybe I'm available after the fact and I've seen in minutes, but in the minutes, there's a link for each of the
Yes, Melissa, did you have a better way of kind of directing people to it?
As far as the the plan itself?
No, the like the YouTube video.
The YouTube video.
Why don't I find the YouTube videos?
Yes, for this, but to have an actual in-hand copy or see it on the on the screen to have a, you know.
It'll be posted immediately after this meeting on the main page of our website under news. Thank you. And you can download it. Yep.
Anyone else from vote, someone?
I have a question. So like next week's, second week's meeting before you hit the May five uh plan, is that going to cover all of central town? This, you went into kind of a generalized presentation as well as in that new area of Great Northern. So is that going to, is the next meeting going to cover all the town issues?
Would you like me to address the question? By all of the town issues. So chapters one through four really help focus on here are all of the issues. The next phase focuses on here are all of the solutions. So um this was just a highlight of what's included in the plan, but the actual plan that's going to be posted tonight is, I believe, just over fifty-some pages. So if if there's something missing from that that you're looking for, certainly at the April twenty-first meeting, we'd be happy to to better understand that or in advance of it.
So this is all going to be posted up online for us to to review, and it's the whole plan.
It's chapters one through four. So it's just the issues and existing conditions. On April twenty-first, we will post the rest of the plan. Okay, after doing a similar presentation as
That's where solutions will be offered?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none. Let's take our last item is the executive session. Entertainer motion convening in executive session, percent of the Idaho Code, section seventy-four, two oh six, one and J to communicate with legal counsel to for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of the and legal options pertaining litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated and considered labor contract matters authorized under Idaho Code, section seventy-four dash two oh six, eight, one, A, and B. Any motion?
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Sprow?
Yes.
Councilman Darby?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you to those members of the public who participated in this evening. Everyone not participating in the executive session will now need to exit the room, please. And the public Zoom meeting will now end. Good night, everyone.